Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. E.J. Tyson is the pastor at New Hope Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we are grateful for another expression of your goodness. We thank you that you have brought us into another day that we've never seen before. And after it run its course, we shall never see it again. We thank you for this, our city. Thank you for our leadership, our mayor, city manager, all the councilmen. Thank you for our police, fire, and first responders, those that help give leadership to our city. And I say I pray now that you will bless and direct and guide. We're living in a world of, in a nation and state, city of times, it's unrest. But we pray for your peace and your direction. You said, "Trust in the Lord with all thy heart and lean not to thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge you, and you shall direct our path." So give direction for our council and our leadership of our city to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and concern, to be able to speak with clarity, realizing that we are servants of thee and we are here to serve your people. Keep us now, Lord, in your keeping hand. And as we share in this season of Thanksgiving, let us have an attitude of gratitude, remembering the least, the lost, and the left out. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on item four of the council agenda, to receive the journal for November 8th and to approve the journal for October 25th. Try that again. Item four is on the council journal. Is there a motion to receive the journal for November 8th and approve the journal for October 25th? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's some starting on page 19. Page 19 under item nine, I-1. Item A, 1162 North Eagle, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 3729 Williams Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item G, 1507 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 921 Northwest 87th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item P, 208 Northwest 122nd, 121st Street, excuse me, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Moving to page 20, under item nine, J-1, A, 1162 North Eagle, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item D, 3729 Williams Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F, 1507 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item L, 921 Northwest 87th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And item M, 208 Northwest 121st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, that moves us on to item six, revocable permits. We have a couple of events coming up. The first that we will discuss is the OKC Turkey Tracks. Don Garrett and Kerry Ralston have shown up today to tell us about this event, which is scheduled for Thanksgiving Day. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us about your event.
Our event is the Fifth Annual OKC Turkey Tracks, 5K Run and a One Mile Fund Run. And we've done this the last five years to help Toys for Tots raise toys and funds to help their US Marine Corps reserves.
Wonderful. How can people get involved?
They can visit the website, www.dgrorderacing.com, and still register there. You can register the race morning on site.
All right. Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Is there a motion on this item, 6A? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B is a request to hold the Christmas Parade, December 3rd, in the Stockyards. And Pam Shelton is here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pam.
We are having our Cowboy Christmas Parade on December 3rd with a lot of other events happening. We have an art show going on at UMB from Shel Wagner. And we have Santa Claus coming, so I have some flyers if you'd like one. And then, these are from Oklahoma. They are not Texas Longhorns. So you will each have a Texas Longhorn cookie. I mean Oklahoma, Oklahoma Longhorn cookie. What am I thinking?
Wonderful.
But that is what we were doing.
Thank you. I mean, if every spokesperson brought a cookie, that would be just so wonderful.
Okay, well, I don't know how you want me to do this, but I've got them.
Well, you're very kind, Pam. And I've attended the parade in the past. It's a wonderful morning event in Stockyards. It's December 3rd, and it's between South Penn and South Agnew. And does a great job of drawing people over to the Stockyards and letting people see what they've done. And I usually try to throw in breakfast at Cattlemen's while I'm there. So it's a good thing to add on to your morning on December 3rd, head over to the Stockyards. I'll need a motion to make this official.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Pam, thank you to all your merchants. All right. Or assess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Is there a motion on the MFA?
Yeah.
All right. Any comments or questions here? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Are there any comments here?
I have a, I have one question. On item C, it's the active duty military fee for Trosper Park.
Yes.
For Trosper Golf. Is it just for Trosper?
Yes.
And what's the reason for only doing it at Trosper and not?
Well, the rationale is that Trosper doesn't bring in the traffic as the other three. It's in a kind of a remote location and doesn't.
Okay.
And it performs not quite as well as the other three. And also, it's proximity to Tinkler Air Force Base.
Okay. Thanks. Is there a motion on the PPA?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Is there a motion on the EAT?
Move the items.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the items. Consideration.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the consent docket? Larry?
U.
Q. All right.
And?
And? All right, Larry, why don't you get started with Q.
Yeah, Eric Winger just walked in. Eric, if you could come forward, I'd just like to validate something if I could on item Q. This is a road widening and resurfacing project on South Check, Meridian, I mean, excuse me, I'll get there, Reno, from Check Hall to Cemetery. And from what I read there, Eric, this is supposed to start in January of next year and be completed by the end of the year. Is that right?
If you could help me with the item again, Mr. Councilman, I'd appreciate it. I was looking at U or which one?
Q.
Q, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Widening and resurfacing on West Reno from Check Hall to Cemetery.
Yes, so we actually, we have this starting in January of 17, so right at the beginning of the first of the year, and then we hope to finish it by late summer around August of 17. So it's a pretty quick project. Now, one of the things that I might mention is the project is really focused at the intersection. It will not actually include the complete widening of that section, but we are widening and doing all the intersection work and maximizing the expenditure of funds that were allocated to the project.
Great, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh-huh. Mark, you wanted to speak on item N?
Just briefly, Martin Nature Park. Beginning in January, there's going to be some new construction out there on facility improvements to the tune of $348,000, which are needed. And I always want to mention, Martin Nature Park, it is a jewel, and I hope more and more people will go out and use and enjoy the park.
Well put. And I think we have some presentations coming up.
Right, we have three this morning. One on the Modern Streetcar, one on the Draper Trails, and one on the budget cuts. Let's just go ahead and get the budget cuts taken care of.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Dowler, the Budget Director, and I'm here to talk about the mid-year budget cuts that we're doing as a budget amendment. This is our second budget amendment for the year, and we've got two changes that we're considering here. The primary one is the mid-year budget reduction and also a small change in the debt service fund that I'll address at the very end here. So our mid-year budget recuts were due to the shortfall we're seeing in revenue in the general fund, primarily in sales tax. Right now, we're 3.7% below last year's totals for sales tax. That puts us $3.8 million below our target through November. Use tax is also running below target, 2.4 million below target through November. Our other revenues are basically on target at this point through the year, through October. But again, sales and use tax being such a huge piece of our budget, it requires us to look at reductions. So what we're going to be changing on the revenue side of the budget is our sales tax projection. We're going to reduce that by $9.2 million. That change, our original projection was for 1.6% growth in sales tax. This reduction changes that to a decrease of 2.6%. And so again, we're going from positive 1.6 down to negative 2.6 on our sales tax forecast. When we look on the expenditure side, what that equates to is $4.4 million in reductions in departments, $2 million in reduced capital spending from the general fund, $2.8 million reduction in contingency, for a total again of $9.2 million. When we look at some of the large departments and the impacts that they'll be facing in development services, the reductions are a code inspector, animal welfare officer, and a unit operations supervisor in the development center. On the fire department, what they've proposed is a $1.2 million reduction in personal services in general. And how they intend to achieve that is through a reduction in callback overtime. And that occurs when staffing gets a little bit low. They may have to call people back in to help staff equipment, and that results in overtime expenses for each of those individuals called back. So to reduce that callback overtime, what they're proposing is to temporarily take apparatus out of service based on weather conditions. So again, this is not a fixed, this station is out of service, that sort of thing. It's again, based on weather and other conditions. So on a rainy day like today, they would be taking probably brush pumpers and things like that out of service, again, just to reduce the number of officers called back in on overtime. Looking at the Parks Department, there's a total of seven positions being reduced there, five in the grounds division, a custodian from civic center, and inventory technician in recreation. In the Police Department, we're reducing 11 police officer positions that are currently vacant. Those will not be filled. We have four police sergeants. Those positions are filled. They serve as resource officers for elementary schools in the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Those officers will be transferred to other positions that are currently vacant, but we will no longer provide that school resource officer function for elementary schools in Oklahoma City Public Schools. They have a vacant equipment services worker and two vacant report clerks that are also being eliminated there. In public works, we have three heavy truck driver positions, two concrete finishers that are, those five positions are in streets, and a construction inspector in field services is being reduced. When we look at other cuts around the city, we have a management and budget analyst in my office in the finance department, a mechanics helper in general services, an assistant municipal councillor too in the municipal councillor's office, two deputy marshals in courts, and an associate planner in the planning department. So overall, what we're looking at is 39 net positions being reduced. That brings our authorized full-time position count to 4,460. The final change that I just mentioned briefly at the beginning is our debt service fund, an amendment. The state law requires that the county excise board adopt the official budget for the debt service fund. That was done, that's done at a different time than when we adopt our budget, so we always come back with an amendment to just kind of bring those back into alignment, what we assumed would be the budget when we brought that to you versus what the final number was from the county excise board. And that's a change of less than a half million dollars there. So again, overall, we're looking at a decrease in the overall city budget of $8.8 million. General fund total budget will be $404 million with this change, and our total budget for all city funds, $1.26 billion. So that's just kind of a quick overview of where things are. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
We try to do this to minimize the service level to our, minimize the impact of our service level to our citizens. 39 positions is not good, but it's less than 1% of our workforce. We think it's a prudent step at this point because of the declining revenues that we've received. We hopefully think it'll take us to the year's end. I also have asked the department heads to be in the chambers this morning, so if you have any specific questions you'd like to ask any of the department heads in regard to service regarding their departments, they're here to answer any questions you might have this morning.
Yeah, Pete?
Does it involve layoffs, actual layoffs of anyone?
We're hopeful not, because we think we have enough vacant positions. I can't promise that at this point in time. If it is, it's going to be a very small number, but we don't think so at this time.
Yeah, I believe we're down to two positions that they're looking for places for those people at this point, so.
You're down to two at this point?
That they're looking for places for them to fit.
All right, any other comments or questions for Doug?
Keep looking.
Well, I just appreciate the city manager's office and the budget, the finance, for staying on top of this, because I know it's not fun to do this, but it's good to do it now and not later where it becomes kind of a crisis situation, so I really appreciate it.
And I really appreciate the department stepping up. There wasn't a complaint. They all understand where we're at and what the situation was, and we really had full cooperation out there. Nobody liked it, but everybody stepped up to the plate.
Any projections or thoughts on what November and December are going to look like with regards to sales tax revenue? Are we optimistic?
Well, I mean, we continue to work with Dr. Evans at the, at OCU. His forecast, as he kind of has models that he looks at and that kind of stuff, we're looking at continued negative growth here, less negative, but continued negative for the next several months.
All right, Doug, thank you.
Now, let's go to a little more positive news. We've got Doug Smith with Jacobs Engineering here. He's our consultant for the MAPS III Modern Streetcar, and he's going to give us an overview of the whole program, but highlighting the contract award on your agenda this morning for the actual construction of the Modern Streetcar project.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
City Council. Yeah, we do have some good news on the Streetcar project today, so I'd like to go through the status of the vehicles, the maintenance facility, and then finally, the main line, and talk about that bid that we just opened. This is a picture of a truck that goes under the Streetcar. There are two of them on each Streetcar. Brookville is building 14 of these. That's two for each of the six vehicles plus two spares. They fabricate them in the vicinity of Brookville, Pennsylvania, north of Pittsburgh. And this is a picture of Detroit's truck. Oklahoma City's truck is identical to this, except we have a resilient mount, which is a unique feature between the motor and the frame of the truck body, which helps the vibration and will help with less maintenance. Anyway, this is the first resilient mount that they've built, and they're excited to provide it on Oklahoma City's trucks. In addition to that, we're seeing good performance by Brookville's project manager. He's doing a great job keeping up with the production status. The things that we worry about are things like the propulsion units, the motors, the doors, the brakes. These are things that are a little bit out of Brookville's control because they come from other vendors. So they're doing their best to prosecute those contracts, keep them in order, keep them on schedule. And Brookville is doing everything that they can in terms of the things that they produce on site to keep those, keep that production schedule on track. So to that extent, we've been through the final design review. We're almost done with that by the end of November. Most of the major design items are going to be taken care of in terms of their submittals. Everything's reviewed, ready to go. They are starting to fabricate the body frames, and so there, we have actual parts on the assembly line in Brookville. And so the, basically, the schedule for that is they'll have the first car body complete in December. They'll start assembling things on it later in December, and then in April, some of those subsystems I mentioned, such as propulsion motors, will arrive. They'll start plugging them into the, into the parts, and then the car will be complete in April, and then they'll start testing in May with the goal of delivering the first car to Oklahoma City in June. And then, they would be one a month until November of 17. This is the early schedule. It's not their contracted schedule, but it's their goal to be able to deliver them on this schedule. And there's not much doubt in my mind that they will make it. So with that in mind, we won't have a maintenance facility ready in June, so we're looking at options on how they can be stored and where they would be put until we have the building open. There is a small change order that's on your consent agenda. It has, as we go through these design changes with Brookville, we make adjustments in the specification that was in their contract. One of those is related to wheelchair tie-downs. This is one where on a lower speed vehicle like a Streetcar, we found that the wheelchair patrons can lock their vehicles in place in the designated area on the vehicle. There's a low floor, they roll on, they can lock them down, and they don't need the tie-downs, which is something that they need more on a light rail vehicle that goes higher speed. Also, the vandal film was something that Embar looked around and saw that other, other operating entities such as Dart down in Dallas have on the interior windows. It's to keep vandalism from etching the glass, and this protects the glass, has a good payback on it, and so we decided to make an additive change order on that. So there's a net cost impact around $9,000 on the current change order that we have with them. Anyway, in summary, we're really happy with our vehicles out and everything seems to be on track. Maintenance facility, this is a cross-sectional view looking in, and you notice that the lowest spot there, that is our service and maintenance position. So this is where they drive in, and the mechanics can get in under the vehicle and get into the pit. You'll notice that the deepest section there, I'll show you that in a second. We're still on track for a completion date of September 23rd. This is the bottom of the maintenance pit going in. We're excited that we do have concrete being poured out there on that site. We had some early issues with, we found a couple of old oil storage tanks that we had to remove. There were some contaminated soils that had to be mitigated. That's all been taken care of. We have our site issues. Everything that's underground has been dealt with at this point. We're pouring concrete and we're getting out of the ground. So that's the bottom of that maintenance pit. There, there's the walls of that maintenance pit going up. I believe all those walls have been poured. In the next couple of weeks, they'll be working on the rest of the foundation, and we'll, and we'll go up from there. Now, I'd like to tell you about the rail delivery. So this is something we just finished, and then all of the rail that we need to construct the main line is now in Oklahoma City and stored. We had about 50 total truckloads come up from Houston. This is the rail that was fabricated in Austria. It's the special rail that's, that has a lower depth, and it's, fits very well for Streetcar projects because of the depth of the slab. The, the delivery dates, we have, we've delivered into the south staging area near Southwest 10th and Robinson. And then we also have the DeLisi storage area of near 16th and Broadway. That area has now been stored, and there's a picture of that rail going in there near 16th and Broadway. So it's all in Oklahoma City and it's ready to go. The special track work, these are the turnouts and switches that go where we have turns and, at the intersections, so that's Cleveland Track material, and we, as far as we know, that's on schedule to be delivered in March and July, which will fit in with the mainline contractor's schedule. All right, so the main line, we did get those bids open. We were thrilled to, to see that we got a bid that was under our budget. We had an engineer's estimate of $57 million, and we got a bid of $50 million as our low bidder from Herzog Contracting. You can see there the base bid of $50 million. We had two other bidders, Archer Western and Connect OKC. So we were, we were happy with a range of bids. They were all under our engineer's estimate. These were all pre-qualified contractors. We went through the pre-qualification process to make sure that our bidders, the contractors, knew what they were doing when they took this on. And we feel like that was a benefit to us when the bids came in and reflected in the results we got. We are recommending Herzog, which is a joint venture with Herzog and Stacy Whitbeck. And I will point out, the base bid is what's being recommended. We have some deductive alternates that were included. That was to protect us in the event that we did come in with bids that were higher than what we, our engineer's estimate was, but we didn't need that. So we are recommending that we go with the base bid and not take any of the deductive alternates. So the $50 million amount is the amount that we're recommending for the award. As I mentioned, all the bidders were responsive. They're all pre-qualified. They're all, they're all highly qualified to do the work, as is the one that we're recommending, the Herzog team. The electrical system subcontractor also had to be pre-qualified. That's C3M, and they will be, they're teamed up on that joint venture. So everything looks good. Just a word about what we know about Stacy Whitbeck and the Herzog team is they do have an excellent history of constructing these systems across the US. You can see on the list some of the things they've done. Most recently, they've completed Kansas City, which is now in operation, very successful project, doing great. They also did the Dallas Streetcar, also in operation. So these are projects in our vicinity that they've built, that they know how to do, and so we're thrilled to have them as our builder. And our design team does have a history of working with this contractor, so we'll be able to continue that forward. Our experience with them indicates that they understand the sensitivities of the downtown environment. We definitely have that to deal with. They do have a good history of on-time, on-budget performance, and they also like to be a successful stakeholder in terms of community involvement. So, you know, through the design phase, ADG has had an outreach program that's gone out, and they've knocked on doors, and they've talked to businesses about what their events are and what we need to work around and what's important to the businesses. And we believe that the Herzog team is going to pick right up from there and start with their outreach program and blend right in with what we have started in that regard. So a lot of good news on that front. And so the, in terms of the overall schedule, we're getting ready to go into construction now. We have about a two-year construction phase and testing, and everything at this point targeted toward a November 2018 opening day. That's where we're at.
The first car in June, maintenance facility in September. Where are we going to store these things in between?
We're working on that.
Okay. Do we have some options?
We have, we have a few months' gap where we need to find a place. And we've got some ideas, but we just haven't solidified everything yet.
Okay, thank you.
Hate to bring this up, but have you tested for how large of an earthquake we could incur and not damage the tracks? Or those tend not to have any problems if we have an earthquake here?
I'm going to, I've got Tim Martin on our design team here, so I'm going to attempt an answer, and then he's going to back me up. First of all, our track slab is designed to be able to span a utility trench that's up to 10 feet wide. It's heavily reinforced, and it's designed so that a Streetcar can actually roll over the slab. That's a 100,000 pound Streetcar, so that it can roll over that slab with actually being an open trench under it. It's very well reinforced and tied together, that eight-foot-wide slab that's in the street. I don't know that there's been actual tests in terms of earthquake resilience in that kind of facility, but it's as strong or stronger than the street that's surrounding it.
My thought is that if we had an earthquake that was significant enough to disrupt a modern Streetcar, this would probably be the least of our problems.
We, you know, we've got, never mind. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And David Todd is coming up and give us an update on the Draper Trails. We've completed the West River Trail. We've awarded some of the contracts for the I-44 Trail now called the Will Rogers Trail, and the third trails grouping is the Draper Trails.
Good morning. This is for the Lake Draper Trail. It's split into three projects, so what we're looking at today is actually three preliminary reports, but I'm going to summarize all three of them. So as I said, there's three, three projects, about 13 miles. Cabinet Engineering, CEC, and Triad Design are engineers working on this. Each section has a $3.4 million budget. And also want to mention that we did have a community meeting out at the Marina. It was well-attended. We got some good ideas from the people, but I think mostly the message we got out there is they are anxious for a trail. They, they can't wait for this trail to be on, on, on the Draper, some of them just so that, that they can get off. They can't wait for this trail to be on Draper, some of them, just so that they can get off the street because they're out there riding with traffic. So here's an overview of the trail. It's a very small scale, but you can see the three different colors indicate the three different projects. So this is also a cross-section here. Shows the trail's 12 feet wide. It will be an asphalt trail, concrete in some places where we have ramps and things, but an asphalt trail, 12 feet wide, very similar to what we did at the West River Trail. There are places out there where there are street crossings and parking lots and things like that. In those areas, we will provide the bollards and the ramps, just like you see out at Hefner or what we did on the West River Trail to discourage motorized vehicles from getting up on the trail. So we'll start with the first trail. This is the one that Cabinet Engineering is doing. And again, the scale is such that it's hard to see a lot of detail, but you can see it goes along the west side of the lake. And as I mentioned, there's a lot of driveways and things out there. It's not just open country with the lake. There's the marina, the fishing piers, the marina park, there's RC, the remote control airplanes that are out there, and then the Cross Timbers Off-Road Riding Area, another view of that area. And the parking lot at the marina. This is the northern part of the trail. I want to point out that the trail originally ran right along the lake road there. And the subcommittee, at their meeting this month, and eventually the advisory board agreed that they wanted to get the trail closer to the lake. So you can see that little loop from right there at the Marina Road, about halfway down the picture, swings out and gets further to the water. And this was, as I said, something that was revised at the subcommittee meeting. It added to the budget, and I will show that to you at the end. And here is the southern portion of this trail. It goes down right along the dam and connects with the next project. Not only are there parking lots and roads out there, but there's also a substantial amount of utilities with the water treatment plant out there. There's a lot of water lines, but there's also some petroleum lines, Magellan and Southern Dome pipelines out there that we have to work with. And then we have to work with the Corps of Engineers, the Water Resources Board, the Game of Fish, and certainly Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. So there's been a lot of coordination going on for this project. So now let's look at the red portion of the trail. This is the one that is being done by CEC, about four miles. Starts there at the, below the dam. We're not going to be up on the dam. It's too narrow, and it's just too complicated to work with the governing bodies. So we're going to be down on the, at what we call the toe of the dam. And you can see that on this picture. And then once it gets past the dam, it gets back up along the street. There's a potential trailhead parking area right there in yellow. That is not part of the project, but we have identified that as a place that we could do it. And if we have money, I think the subcommittee fully intends on trying to get that done. Continuing on north, north is to your left now, continuing along the existing roads that are in there. Then continuing on along the road up to southeast 104th Street, where it will connect with the third section, which is the yellow section on this, or on this picture. About four and a half miles. It will eventually connect to the Tinker Draper Trail, and you can see the intersecting streets that we will cross. So this is starting at the westerly edge, north and westerly, and north is up now. So you can see where it connects there, Lake Stanley Draper, and goes along Midwest Boulevard, then gets back on Stanley Draper Drive. Another thing that the, pardon me, subcommittee wanted to do is they wanted to try and get closer to the water everywhere. And there were a lot of reasons why we couldn't get close. Down in the southern area, there's a lot of duck lines, so there's some activity that you might not want to be too close to. But also just cost and sensitivity to the environment. So what we looked at was maybe bringing a trail down this little peninsula that you see here. It was very expensive because of all the tree clearing and just the distance of it. So what we settled on was to do an alternate in the plans with that purple line there that will come down, and then it connects to that park, and we'll use the existing road as a share, the road avenue, to give them a loop to get down to that park. And that did have some budget impacts, but we'll talk about it here in a minute. And then you can see continuing on along Stanley Draper Drive, connecting with the CEC project. So these are the budget impacts that I was talking about. It's split up evenly among the three projects, $3.4 million. You can see the estimates that we have on the right now with those additions that the subcommittee suggested and advisory board also agreed with. It is over budget, but the Trails and Sidewalks Committee right now has a surplus of money from the West River Trail project that they want to use on this project to make it better. So it's not additional monies, it is within their project-specific area. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
It's an exciting project for Ward 4. Long-term, we anticipate the construction of an additional reservoir. Would that trail go between the two reservoirs?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
Yes.
Have you looked at extending it some way to Kitchen Lake? You know, that was done, Kitchen Lake was done totally separately and as an add-on to the Parks Department years after we did the...
Right. We haven't looked at that. We can certainly get with planning and parks and discuss that option.
But it's now a whole quarter section that the Water Trust has allocated to the Park Department that has that really neat lake on it, but it also has some other room for other activity fields. And it's not that far. I'm not sure where you'd make a connection, but you might, somebody might look at the closest point to the trail as it comes east. I think it comes down Midwest Boulevard there, right?
Yes, sir.
There could be a connection across there that would make it, it would just really be a nice addition to hook that together, because that's going to be, ultimately, eventually that's going to be a real destination point as the population picks up out there.
We'll look at it.
If there's any more surplus, I would highly recommend finishing out Overholser, the loop around Overholser on the west side of the lake.
Yes, sir.
So that's just my suggestion. Okay. Larry?
With respect to the West River Trail and the money that's going to be moved over to the other eastern trail, are we sure that we don't need that money for any last-minute things on the West River Trail? And the reports that I get back on the West River Trail are just outstanding, exceptional. People love it. Are we on firm ground there?
Yes, sir. We finished that, and that's under the purview of the Parks Department now, so we're complete with that project.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Any other comments or questions from David? All right, David, thanks. All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. That leads us to the concurrence docket. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Any individual considerations here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is item 9A, which is up for final hearing today, and this has to do with the Seber Hotel and its historic landmark status. Is there anyone here speaking on this item today? All right, is there a motion here?
Tom Ode.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B has been withdrawn, so you can strike that item from your agenda. Item 9C is up for final hearing today. This is a zoning case from South Rockwell Avenue. Would be rezoned from AA Agricultural to a new planned unit development. Larry, I know you've been working on this one.
Yes, ma'am. Francis, has anybody signed up to speak on this? What I'd like to do is call the applicant forward and have them give you a historical perspective of some of the challenges that they've had to get to this point, and to explain where we are, and then take any questions, and then we'll go from there.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Tim Johnson, who is the civil engineer on the project. This has been a project that, as the councilman said, we've been working on a long time. We had a meeting at the very outset with the folks south of us. We sent out notice ourselves, understanding that there could be some protest. We wanted to get out ahead of it and meet with them, see what issues they have. At the outset, we had 155 lots, and at the southeast corner of our development, we had a little commercial tract that we intended to have some sort of neighborhood commercial. The resounding answer we got from the neighbors was, we like the development, we don't want any commercial. We moved out here to be inconvenienced on purpose, and we want to keep it that way. So we set out to take the commercial out of the application, and once we did that, we were then received with the approval of the folks south of us. And if you look at the neighborhood south of us, it's a neighborhood called Rio de Bella. It's 320 acres of 35,000 square foot lots up to some two-acre lots. So what we sought to do is to match the density and the character and the style of Rio de Bella. We went at 155 lots. We continued to work with staff and the councilmen, and what we came to now is 135 lots. What we were able to do, everything you see in yellow are one-acre lots. We have 15 one-acre lots that we are going to push to the west side to match the larger lots that are west of our property line. This represents about 11% of our total lot count being one acre or greater. Rio de Bella has 12% of their lots one acre or greater. So we feel like we matched the style, the character of Rio de Bella, which is what the neighbors south of us wanted. Initially, there was a lot of protest letters submitted. As you might imagine, it's a lot easier to sign a protest letter and to come protest than it is to come and support. We had, I believe, four separate meetings with the neighbors. The attendance at those meetings dwindled significantly. We had about 30 or 40 at the first one. The second meeting, I think there were four people, four people who weren't at the first one. And then the third meeting, there were three people because they weren't at the first two meetings. So each time we met with them, we got the consistent response that they're satisfied with our development now that we're not going to have the commercial. Additionally, detention is not required, but we are going to have some detention within our development. Our hope is that that will cure some problems that are already faced out here east of us. So with that, what we have is what I think is a good compromise. It's a development pattern that is prevalent in this part of the city. It's very popular, and one that the neighbors are supporting.
Thank you, David. Any questions from the council?
Well, I know it was recommended for denial at one point. Is there, is that still an issue, or have the negativity completely dwindled away? Can anybody provide some insight to that initial report?
Part of the original problem is that this property, we can't serve it with sewer just because of the situation with the ridgeline. The planning commission was concerned about the density. There was a lot of discussion about it, is this appropriate? But it really does mirror that Rio de Bella that's to the south. What they've agreed to do, they're providing two easements that eventually, if sewer is extended, they'll be able to move, put sewer into those easements. And staff's okay with that, that piece of it, and with the amendments that he's proposed here.
So the expectation is that they will attach onto our water supply? Is that...
Yes. Well, the expectation is at some point, because of the development pressure there, sewer will be provided. And at that point, those easements will allow us to extend the sewer through there and attach to other properties.
I see.
But we will be served by water?
Okay.
Yes.
They do have water. And then if the sewer lines come in there, these properties will have access to it.
Okay.
This will be handled well, not exactly like Rio de Bella's. Sewer, sewer in Rio de Bella is an aerobic system?
Correct. Right. It's private sanitary sewer solutions.
And we're talking about aerobic here, and both subdivisions, Rio de Bella and this new one, will have water. They're going to bring water to the site.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the red lines on this map represents what Mr. Teener was talking about. We've provided easements in our development so that if sewer ever does get there, the development would be able to tap on. And the easements are already there for the infrastructure, so it would make it a lot easier in the after.
Okay.
I probably should have looked closer, but are you requiring aerobic in this development? Is it, or is it going to be partial septic and some...
I think the way it's worded is private sanitary solutions are allowed. So if the land would perk, I'm guessing they could do that. I don't think it's required that they have aerobic, but that's certainly an option.
All right. Larry, you want to make a motion?
If there are no more questions, thank you, David. I move for approval.
Second.
Mayor, first, we need to vote on the amendment separately, and then on the ordinance.
Okay. Does everyone have the amendment?
The amendment is the one that brings the lot sizing, I mean, the number of lots to the total that David was talking about.
Correct.
So I'll move the amendment.
Thank you.
All right. Cast your votes on the amendment. Passed unanimously.
And now I'll move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item 9D is to close some right-ofaways. First one's in Ward 2, Ed, at 1220 Northwest 51st Street. You okay with this one?
Yes. I move for approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on 9D1. Passed unanimously. Item 9D2 is in Ward 7, southeast 30th, west of South High. John, you okay with that?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clark, anybody who's signed up? No one signed up? I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 9D2. It passed unanimously. 9E has been deferred until the next meeting on December 6th. Item 9F are three items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is in Ward 2, and it would establish some 45-degree parking. Ed, you all right with this?
Yes. Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And the next two are also in Ward 2. So Ed, if you'll just move them forward.
Move, move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9F2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And 9F3?
Move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously as well. Item 9G is back to us for the second time today as a public hearing. This regards our smoke detectors and what we're requiring of people who live in some of the more rural areas. Is there anyone here that hopes to speak today at the public hearing for this matter? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9J? All right, a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9K is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned buildings list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9L is a public hearing regarding the capital improvement plan. The council had a presentation on this a couple of weeks ago. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on the public hearing aspect of this today? All right, how about a motion then? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9N, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And 9O, the same story. We do not need executive session, so a motion to approve. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9P, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9Q, I understand we do need executive session, so a motion to move that to executive session.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9R, I understand we do need executive session, so a motion to move that to executive session.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9S, I understand we do need executive session, so a motion to move that one on.
Move to executive session.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9T is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9T? All right. How about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 10? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything for us today?
The developer of the Lantana Apartments has been doing some work, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, that there have been things happening, and...
Good.
I appreciate it. It still doesn't look great, but it's improving.
Is that on 10th Street?
Yes. And I'm still cautiously optimistic that we're going to get that problem fixed, so that's all I have.
Okay. Ed?
I went to four very productive Neighborhood Association meetings in the last week on the GEO bond. All very productive. The page on our website, okc.gov/geo is awesome. It's a really, really good page. Has a direct link to the online survey. Thanks to everybody and city staff who put that together, because the word's getting out, at least the neighborhood leadership knows about it. It's an awesome page. Still hoping to get like a list of projects, like a preliminary list of projects. I don't know if we're waiting... I know we have a bond workshop in a couple of weeks.
You'll have it before then.
Before then. Great. That's awesome. All four meetings, very lively discussion about earthquakes. I mean, that's on a lot of people's minds, and I don't know if that gets incorporated maybe into our workshop in a couple of weeks, or just some... People want to know, like, if you commit yourself for 10 years, what impact would that be? We'll talk about it at the workshop, but it's on a lot of people's minds. And I had a question. I saw a news report. They want to do two new disposal wells right on the border of Yukon and Oklahoma City. Is that, is there a zoning? Does that come before the council at all, or with the state preemption? Is that just, we have no say?
Totally preempted by the state.
Totally preempted by the state.
Right.
So we have no say over creation of new disposal wells, the depth of them, the volume, nothing?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Larry?
Your Honor, last week, John and I had the privilege of attending National League of Cities, and just a couple of observations. The town of Pittsburgh is really a delightful city to visit and to see what they've done. They've recovered from the old days where they were a steel-oriented economy and coal. You still see some vestiges, a historical building going up. U.S. Steel has a headquarters there, Pittsburgh Paint Glass, which many of us know about, and then Heinz 57. But they've moved forward from the old days. They had a couple of general sessions there. One of them was particularly interesting to me. Terry Bradshaw, now an Oklahoma resident down in south of the state, down by Marietta, gave a very inspirational talk about how to be successful and shared some of his personal history. And then we also then had some workshops, and at one of the workshops, a very interesting concept, which I was not aware of, I've kind of nicknamed it Spokys for Cars. There's a company out that is going to put cars out there, and you join this shared organization, and then when you want a car, you go to a designated lot, you've made a reservation, you get in that car, you drive it forever long you had the reservation for, and then you take it back. And the concept is to get rid of car ownership, and I've kind of nicknamed that Spokys for Cars. So that was interesting to hear about that. Then there was a lot of talk about the unmanned cars that are being tested in Pittsburgh, and I guess some of the NLC people went out and actually tried that. Our mayor was up there. I don't know whether you tried the unmanned car.
I did take Uber, but I did not get one of the autonomous vehicles. Yeah, I had a real driver.
So there's a lot of technology things that are being introduced that were talked about at the workshops. Thank you, Your Honor.
It's like every second or every third car out there in Uber is autonomous. Now, there are people sitting in the front seats, but they're not controlling the car. It's in a testing mode from Google.
I didn't have a comment until I heard Larry's comment. Very omitted, the nicest thing about Pittsburghers are baseball stadiums. It is absolutely one of the nicest stadiums in the country. It is absolutely beautiful.
When you grew up as a Brooklyn Dodger fan, I'm sorry, you tend to have blind spots toward the Pittsburgh Pirates.
David?
Mayor, it's really a question for you. Since the presidential election, there's been discussion about the federal government providing funds for infrastructure improvements in municipalities. And I think when you hosted the mayor's conference, that was one of your organization's recommendations. The number I've heard, and it could be false, I mean, is a trillion dollars. Did your organization come up with a recommendation as far as an amount that you'd like to see the federal government provide?
We did not. The question ultimately is going to be, how are they going to pay for it? And there's some, you know, creative financing out there, the infrastructure bank, trying to figure out the jobs that would be created and how that taxation and tax credits might be worked back into the number. But it is good that we're seeing not only both parties, but all levels of branches trying to agree that they want to do something. We're also pushing for more local discretion on how those dollars are spent, as opposed to the dollars going more through the state, which is the traditional funding method.
I see. Well, that's encouraging. I would say, going back to our earlier presentation with respect to our budget, depending upon the timing of those types of decisions, combined with, you know, just the past two weeks run-up in the stock market, you know, maybe it's not as pessimistic of a view that we have to look at for the city, because those types of activities tend to create money, dollars. Both those who invest in the stock market have more money to spend, tend to be a little bit more loose with their spending, and tends to have a positive impact on sales tax receipts. And then you combine that with the possible influx of money from the federal government for infrastructure needs, perhaps our outlook isn't as bad as what I previously held. Thank you.
John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Councilman McAtee's comments about NLC. It was very interesting, the national conversation as it relates to police relations in minority communities. In Oklahoma City, I do believe we are on the right track, but it was interesting to hear how other cities are handling that issue as it relates to police. Also, it was also good to hear from cities as it relates to developing in underserved communities. And also, when Terry Bradshaw was on stage, he actually gave Mr. Mayor a shutout. So that was good to see. It was also good to see the mayor in his role as the president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Thanks. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited to announce today that we are very close to completing construction on our first wellness center. Primary code requirement should be completed as soon as December 7th. And this morning, I was talking to Mr. Todd, David Todd, and he was so excited about where we're at with the project. I asked him to come up and just give us a few brief remarks.
Yes, I am excited about completing this. We have scheduled right now to finish the project December 7th, but finishing it is just part of it. Then the operator has to move in and set up all of his equipment and get his people trained. So we're anticipating an actual opening date sometime late January or so, after talking with Healthy Living Incorporated. But I have been out there several times, and I'm real excited about the facility, the way it's designed, the materials that are in there. I think it's going to be a great facility.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. All right. City manager reports.
Mayor, this morning, we'd like to start with a presentation from ETC. Chris Tatham is here. I think Jason's going to introduce him to talk about a survey done regarding transit.
Pleased to report that the Public Transportation and Parking Department has just recently completed our rider and non- rider survey. And as you may recall, the last time we conducted a survey such as this was back in 2011. And that 2011 survey actually opened up some serious discussion and dialogue about improving transit in Oklahoma City, shed some light on the need for the transit system analysis that council requested, and then, as we know, the eventual implementation of some of those recommendations in that study in 2014. So these type of surveys are very important for us, not only in planning transit for the future, but also in reporting regularly to the citizens how we're performing in terms of performance measures that are tied to our strategic business plan. So our plans moving forward with our survey process are to survey our customers each year. We'll do a non- rider survey every other year, and we are also in the process of developing some specialized surveys, one to help us learn better ways to communicate with the Hispanic market in terms of discussing the benefits of public transportation, and then also a survey for downtown residents. And so with that, I'd like to welcome back Chris Tatham with ETC, and he'll share the survey findings with you.
It's great to be back, mayors and members of the council. I know most of you are familiar with our work for the city's annual customer satisfaction survey and priorities survey, but the next slide actually shows kind of our locations around the country. And ETC Institute is actually the nation's leading transit survey company. In fact, during the last four years, we've worked with more than 34 of the nation's largest transit organizations. So we're glad to be here to be able to share this information, along with the other things that you're hearing today. As far as today, I thought I'd walk you through briefly the highlights of the non- rider survey, which is essentially a survey administered to people who aren't using transit service in the area to better understand why and what their attitudes are. We also surveyed people who are currently using the system, and then certainly, if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them. So as far as an on- rider survey is concerned, one of the things that we looked at first, since we were going to be talking with folks who aren't currently using the service, is we really wanted to understand what they thought the importance of transit in the community is. Given that the majority of people don't use transit, do they care about it? What are the attributes of the service they would be interested in using, and what characteristics of the service are really most important to them? One of the things that we looked at as part of this study is when we did the survey for you previously this year, we had asked people what the top priorities were, and in order to really make sure we had comparable data, this survey actually assessed, a previous slide, sorry. This actually was administered over 800 residents throughout Barks service area in both English and Spanish, and the results aren't perfect, but they have an accuracy of about plus or minus 3.5% at the 95% level of confidence. One of the things that we did look at in this survey is really the priority of transit compared to other issues in the community. And if you recall, when I was here at the end of August, this is actually from that survey, is the public transit was actually the fourth most important service to residents. Clearly, condition of streets by far is the number one issue, as you saw when I presented before. When we actually did our analysis, which is shown on the next slide, of where the opportunities for improvement exist, you'll see again, condition of streets were clearly at the top of that list, but public transit, based on the lower satisfaction levels, given the relatively high priority, was the third overall rated opportunity for improvement moving forward when it comes to city services. In this survey that we did this year, we asked residents how important they thought it was for the city to basically investing in public transit for the future, and what you'll see is over half of the folks surveyed who don't currently use the service thought it was either extremely important or important. Another 24% thought it was some important. Only 8% of the people in the community thought it was not important. So for every person who's really passionate and thinks it's extremely important, there are eight of them, or excuse me, there are four of them, to every person in the community doesn't think it is important at all. And this is among people who don't currently use it. And there's often some benefits that non-users see for having services like this in the community, and I'll share that and a little bit more next. We then looked at several transportation issues, and we wanted to find out, well, of all the transportation issues outside just repairing streets and the condition, what things did people in this community who aren't using transit care the most about? And interestingly, they were most concerned about services for elderly folks and disabled. You see, it was rated as the highest priority, based on the percentage you picked it as a high priority or a priority. Widening roads and highways was next, and then building more sidewalks and trails rounded out the top three transportation improvements that residents who aren't using transit prioritized. The other thing that I was really impressed with is Embark's only really been in existence for a couple of years, and most of the time, it takes new transit organizations a long time for people to notice it. But in just two years, two out of three residents who aren't using it are aware and have heard of Embark. You've done a very good job, at least in raising awareness of the community, of the new image of the organization, and I think you should be commended on the efforts that the city's been doing in that area. In addition, one of the things that's been most effective are your bus stops. When we asked people how they figured it out, 63% said they learned about it from bus stops. A lot of people just couldn't really remember exactly where, but your investments in your bus stops have made a big difference in people's awareness of the new service. Some of the other things that we looked at, though, is even though people are familiar or aware of the service, most of them don't know how to use it or aren't real familiar, and that's actually a barrier to use. On the next slide, you'll see that of the people who were surveyed, most actually felt that they lived reasonably close to service access. Only 5% didn't think service was near their home, but you'll see that of those people surveyed, only 8% were very familiar. Another 20% said they were somewhat familiar. 60% said they weren't at all familiar. And that's a big barrier for use, because most of the time, people aren't, if they can drive to where they want to go, they're not going to take the time to learn how to use something. So it suggests that continued education and making it as easy for people to use the system as possible will be a key to see increased ridership. In addition, we wanted to find out whether people who had a choice, in other words, this group of people surveyed were your non- riders, most of which had cars and jobs. We wanted to find out whether or not they actually would even consider using transit. The perception is, is that culturally, people maybe in this area just would never use transit. And you'll notice that 55% of the people surveyed in the dark blue said they'd consider it under the right conditions, and another 33% said they'd only ride if they had no other transportation, and then 12% said they wouldn't even ride it if it was free. But you at least have half the folks in the community under the right conditions that would consider using it. Very small percentage of the population currently uses transit, so even if a small portion of that 55% decided to use it, you could see a potentially significant increase in transit ridership in the community. In addition, the things that were most important to the people who were not currently using it, you'll see on-time performance, frequency of service, and information were the three things that they cared the most about. So in order to overcome some of the barriers to use, people who aren't currently using it have to believe it's going to be on time. The frequency of service has to be levels that they think are reasonable, and frankly, they have to know how to use it and where to use it and how to get access to it. If those three things aren't met, it's going to be difficult to get people who aren't currently riding to decide to start riding it. The other thing that we looked at as part of the survey are people who are actually using the current service. And this is really to better understand who are the people who are currently out there. A lot of times, there's perceptions that maybe the people who are riding it don't have jobs, or they're all on welfare, or they just need social service. So we wanted to really find out, well, who are they? And we also wanted to see if there were many changes since the last survey was done in 2011. So one of the things that we did is we conducted this survey about a year ago. We just re-did the survey here recently, so we'll have new data available in a few weeks. But this was conducted to over 1,000 of your current riders, and so the results are very accurate, within about plus or minus 2.5% at the 95% level of confidence. One of the things that we found is that there's a lot of new riders. This next chart shows that people who had been using it just six months to a year, it's actually gone from 9% to 15%. And you can see, if you add in the six months or less, it stayed the same, but we had a So some of the changes that you've made are attracting new people to the system. The other thing that we found out is that the people who are currently using it are mainly in the workforce. And you'll notice on this next chart that 50% of the people surveyed were either employed full or part-time. Another 17% were looking for work. So two out of three people who are using transit actually are in the labor force. Many of them are doing jobs that the service sector and others definitely needs, and without transit, they wouldn't have another opportunity or other ways to get to work. And when we asked them specifically what their purpose of their current trip was, you'll see that about 4 in 10 were using it to get to and from work, and you can see a variety of other things. The biggest change since the last survey is more folks are using it to go shopping and do errands. And so the ability to do that as part of the service and get more things done is probably one of the reasons you're attracting new people to the system. Another thing that we looked at was just generally how satisfied folks were. And you'll notice on the next chart that the overall ratings for Embarck services are actually really good among the current riders. In fact, have you focused on the percentage of folks that gave below average or poor ratings? You'll see in just about every case, it's around 10% or fewer were really dissatisfied. In fact, you'll see courtesy of drivers has 38% rating as excellent, so there's a real strong brand equity. And you'll look just through the list of items, and most every item has a quarter or more. And most cases of the residents or the people who are using transit give excellent ratings. So overall, the people using it think it's good. The problem is you have a lot of people in the community who don't know enough about it. And so again, there are barriers to usage just because they're not aware of what the service is and how to access it. One of the other things we wanted to find out is that many of the riders have to go through a lot of transfers. This is one of the challenges. Most of you, if you were to get out there, probably don't want to transfer a lot of times to get to your destination. But you'll notice that only a third, or 32%, said they essentially got on the bus and then got off. Of those who had to take a transfer, you'll see that the other 68% had to take at least one transfer, and almost half of the people had to take two or more transfers. So that means to get from destination A to B, you've got to make a lot of moves and wait times, and that's going to certainly be a barrier to usage in the future. And that's one of the things that was somewhat higher here than we've seen in other communities. The nice thing that we did in this survey is we wanted to find what some opportunities to do better. In other words, at the end of the day, what are the things to focus on? And we broke it down into two types of riders. There's one type that we consider, choice riders. These are people who have cars, earn decent levels of income, and could have a choice to not use transit. And among those types of people, the things that were most important or identified as the highest opportunity, this is similar to the analysis that you've seen in the Direction Finder survey we do each year, where the things to the right are more important than the things to the left, and the things at the top are rated better than those at the bottom. So we tend to focus on those things in the bottom right. And you'll see that the helpfulness of transit staff, making sure buses arrive on time and frequency of service. Interestingly, you remember on the non- rider survey what the top three priorities were? That people cared about using? Information, on timeness, and making sure that the service frequency. So the same thing that your current riders are saying are the things you should emphasize are exactly the same thing that the non-writers said they needed to attract. So if you want to get more choice riders, those are clearly the three things to continue to work on. Among your transit-dependent riders, things that they cared the most about is how easy it was to locate stops, frequency of service, and they just want to feel safe while they're riding the buses. And that's again, one of the ways to keep people who don't have a choice, to make sure that they continue to feel like good customers, that they're taken care of and safe in the transit services that they use. We also narrowed it down to a lot of individual things, and we had folks pick one item that they thought would be the thing they'd like to see improved most. And you'll see that 28% of the folks picked more routes to more places. 20% wanted to see buses running more until midnight on weekends. And then more shelters and stops was the third highest selected item of the amenities and improvements that were rated. In addition, I know you've invested a lot in sidewalks and benches, so we wanted to find out whether it made any difference to people. So one of the things that we actually looked at is whether or not the people who are using it had access just to sidewalk, sidewalks and benches, sidewalk shelters, whether all three amenities were available at the location they typically board. And then we looked at their overall satisfaction rating for the transit service. And what we found out is the percentage of good and excellent didn't change dramatically. In other words, people were still generally just as satisfied. But you'll notice that the percent who gave negative responses was significantly reduced when all three amenities were available. Just 4.4% of those surveyed indicated that they gave below average or poor ratings compared to 12.2% overall. So it did make a big difference in reducing the negative experiences, which are likely to increase your ability to retain people once they start using the service. The last thing is just to summarize some of the key things that we found. I think you could feel really good that your current service is certainly meeting the needs of your current riders. The overall satisfaction ratings were very good, and there was a very high percentage of folks who gave excellent ratings. Regardless of whether people use transit or not, your non-writers actually think it's really important for the city to have transit ridership. And I think that's one of the reasons in the citywide survey, it's not the most important issue, but it ranks in the top three to four every year. The service clearly is helping the local economy, that two out of three people are using it to get to and from work. And really, all the service improvements are likely that are being considered are probably going to have a positive impact that you're looking at right now moving forward. So again, just wanted to bring you up to speed of what your current writers think, and also share with you some of the barriers that are keeping people who are not writing from using the transit services that you're developing. And with that, I don't know if there are any questions, Mayor, but we'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions on the survey about Embarck?
How do we compare with other communities about our size?
Your overall satisfaction rating is actually really good. I haven't done specific benchmarks. Your survey's not exactly like the other communities. That's one difference with the citywide survey we do every year. The questions are identical. But I can say just when you look at the satisfaction ratings, very good. One of the big barriers is the way your system works and how many times people have to transfer. That makes it really hard for someone who wants to get from place A to place B simply. It makes it a burden to use. And that's one of the, even though the service is good, it's difficult to use. And so you've got those two things, I guess, going for you and against you compared to other communities.
Thanks. All right.
Just curious, was there any discussion at NLC about how autonomous vehicles, shared riding, could impact transit in the years to come?
I do believe there was a session to deal with it, but I didn't attend that particular session. I think it was a short session. It was like 15, 20 minutes in the exhibit hall, but I didn't get a chance to attend that.
The Spokies with Cars concept is intended to provide people with an option not to have a car and to use the Spokies with Cars for certain of their transportation needs, which would then by logic follow that they would use the public transit where it was suitable for that. So you would go public transit and the Spokie for Car approach.
Thank you. And thanks for including the part on the shelters. I thought that was the most powerful, and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have one more question. Is there, are there statistics as to the percentage of people that utilize the bus system based on the size of the city?
Certainly, you can look at that.
I've always had the impression that we underutilize the system, and partly it's because of the system.
Yeah, even the Census State will have motive access to work, so you can look and find out how people in different communities actually get to work.
You know, we've got, there's a lot of differences. I mean, we have the wide open spaces, and everybody's got cars, and there's lots of differences. But it'd be just interesting to know the percentage. I'm excited about the possibility that COTPA is providing bus passes for high school kids. I think that's a good way to build at the base, get people started riding the system. It'll obviously increase ridership, while not increasing revenues, but it'll increase ridership. And I think that's a way to change that perception about it, starting there. I will, I want to make a comment about this. When Rick Kane left, I had the feeling that I need to hold my breath with regard to what was going to happen in public transit. And I will tell you that you have done, you have done a great job, and I appreciate it very much, what you've done. You had big shoes to follow and, or to fill and to follow also, I guess. But you've done a great job. All those holding my breath periods are past me now. I really do appreciate all you've done.
All right. Thanks.
Mayor, just want to touch on a couple of other things. There's a report in your packet regarding the Fair Labor Standards Act rule changes and how the city has responded to that. First of all, I think Diana Berry, who's in the chambers, Monica Coleman have done a great job of responding to it. In essence, it affects 71 employees and has about a net effect to us of about $22,000. And so that's the effect. I know it's a big deal in a lot of companies across the country. I think we've managed fairly well here. And the last thing, and I won't belabor the point, but we do have the sales tax collections for November. We highlighted that a little bit this morning on Doug Dollar's budget amendment presentation. I just want to point out that for the month of November, that we were 1.8% below last year, and that was 3.7% below our target amount. So not good. It's actually less bad than the last several months have been. Hopefully, there's some positive months ahead of us.
Citizens to be heard. We have two people that have signed up.
Good morning. I'm Dana Wicks, 220 Southeast 26th Street. And I'm coming here today. I know you're going to go into executive session here shortly regarding union contract. And I'm, as a citizen, I just want to tell you that I see budget cuts and everything happening, but we need to think positive because things are only going to get better with the growth we've seen downtown and other things are coming. So I'm here to support, ask me local 2406. You know, the city workers are first responders as well, even though they're not police or fire. We want our water to come in and our sewer to go out. And they're proposing a 20 cent raise. And the reason why I'm coming to you today is because the insurance costs are going up. So they're just going to be evened out with a 20 cent raise, two dimes is all they're asking for. So if you would just seriously take that into consideration, our morale is kind of low as far as union members go with our negative media we've had recently, so we're trying to build that back up. So their new logo is "We Never Quit," so I would appreciate if you'd take that in consideration today.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Sean Fulkerson?
Morning. My name's Sean Fulkerson, and I'm here on behalf of Cusack Meat Company. And I'd just like to address a few things before you go into executive session. I've prepared some materials, if with your permission, I'd like to hand out that you can take to executive session. This packet contains our offer to the city to try to resolve this matter. It's been a very complicated, about an eight-year matter that we've been working on this. Mr. Cusack was told in 2008 that he would be relocated, and we have endeavored as hard as we can to work with the city and Okura to make that happen. We have never received an offer on this matter. We've decided to go ahead and put an offer together where we donate the plant to the city of Oklahoma City. We've worked with your legal counsel. We've done about everything that we can. So we're asking for your consideration on this matter. And if you have any questions or anything after you look at the packet, I'd be glad to answer any of those questions.
All right. Sean, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have executive session. We'll be back.